To close the executive session.
So move again.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna call the May 25 work session to order. Appreciate everybody coming here. We're gonna, I think we're gonna address, we've got a section for citizen comments. We will, if you've got something that's on the agenda, we'll wait for that time for discussion. If you've got something else that's not on agenda, we'll be glad to listen to you at this point in time. Usually, everybody's here interested in something that's on the agenda. We're going to, we're gonna go ahead and do item, the item three through six, which is just event items, and then we'll take item eight before item seven, if that's okay with everybody. Does anybody have any comments or discussions on items three, four, five, or six? Usually not, we're okay. Okay. Item number eight is status report on the May 2010 flood, and I'm gonna start a little bit, and Eric's gonna take over. Certainly has been a difficult time for a lot of people in the last two weeks and four days, or whatever it's been. We are dealing with, you know, we dealt with larger issues, and we're dealing with individual issues at this point in time. And there's a lot of information that's out there, a lot of information that we're gaining. There's certainly a lot of questions that people have come up with and that we ourselves have come up with. And we are doing our best to figure out a lot of different things. I think Eric will discuss that. What we're not going to do tonight, and I think that's important, is we're not voting on anything, well, not making a decision on how the city's gonna proceed with regard to issues with regard to like purchasing homes or whatever. There's been a lot of information flowing in that. There's been a lot of information in the newspaper about what Nashville is doing. And I will have to say, and I don't know if you have much information on that, Eric, but Nashville has been involved in a flood mitigation program for several years prior to this particular flood. And so they have a different set of criteria that they're dealing with than what we might deal with. And I think that's important for everybody to know. We are, and I'll let Eric take that case. We have been researching and researching and asking questions and getting information. I sent a personal email to Carl Dean last night to ask him to give us some information on his, on what they're doing in their, in Nashville, and who their contact person is in Nashville. And he was kind enough to email me back early this morning with that information, and we're arranging those discussions. And we've got, we've also been in contact with Marsha Blackburn's office, who forwarded us an email tonight with regard to TDEC, and I think that's what Eric is going to address. So, having said that, we hope to provide some information tonight. We will not provide any clear definition of the progress at this moment, because we don't know what that is. And we will continue to work this as expeditiously as we're allowed to. But I know, and I can't say that I know what you all are going through, because I haven't gone through that, so I can't, I don't want to put myself in your shoes. But we are constantly trying to figure out the best way for us to proceed as a city, and trying to get that information, and I think are doing a pretty diligent job in that, I know that we are. And I know we're probably not proceeding as quickly as anyone might like for us to proceed, but in these cases, we are not, not only not the only organization, we are on the bottom end of the totem pole. And that is a difficult position sometimes for cities to be in, because in some of these regards, we can take action in some things, we can take action in removing trash debris, and sending our fire, and our police department out and rescue people, but in this stage of this process, it is a, it is a state and federal government guidelines that we have to follow, and we're trying to make sure we're brought up to speed. So, I think, having said that, Eric, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay. And I did want to give the board a bit of an update on our overall flood response. I gave you an update of the report we've been issuing on a regular basis throughout the event, and this is, I think, draft number three or four, and we'll continue to draft this as we collect more information. It's an ongoing report that covers all the aspects of the flood response, and we think also ultimately tie into how we work with federal government and the state in terms of our response and coordinating what, if any, relief we get back from state and federal agencies tied to our efforts in responding to the flood. And I know a lot of what we want to talk about is what we've been researching on property, and I'll get to that in just a minute. I want to hit a couple other just key points that are new in this report. I'm not gonna go back over all the details we went over last time, but hit a couple things that reflect the scope, magnitude of our efforts. Total staff, overtime incurred in response, right now, we've, and this is tracked through yesterday through Monday, and that's on page six in your report, is about $101,000 worth of overtime at this point incurred, which is a pretty decent number, but also has not grown dramatically from the initial response, but we'll continue to keep tracking that. One of the other components is also the various material expenses incurred by departments, that's just under $63,000. The biggest change in the city cost that I want to highlight and bring to your attention is the damage to city properties. We've been continuing to study and update that, and that number has grown from our last report as we've gotten a better handle on costs. And that total damage to city property is now just below $880,000. And the lion's share of that comes from our parks area, which is just under a half million dollars worth of damage to our city parks. And some of the areas with the greatest damage, Fieldstone Park is at just over $200,000. Damage to properties in particular, Harlandstale estimated at $100,000, $60,000 at Winstead Hill, and a number of others as you look at that. But that number has grown since we last looked at that. So that's on pages 10 through, oh, 13 on your, on your report, and that gives an item-by-item number for each of those. So, that summarizes that component, and that is a bigger number than we gave you two weeks ago when we were looking at it. One of the biggest efforts has been the assistance on recovery and cleanup, and in terms of flood debris collected through Friday, we had collected over 1,140 tons of storm-related debris. And that has been an ongoing effort that we started really the Monday after the storm, May 3, and have worked on almost every day since then, in terms of assisting and collecting. Now, in terms of property damage, and then we'll go into the research we've been doing on the programs that may be available to us and to citizens in working with this, we assess that there have been 441 structures with some level of damage, and a total amount of dollar loss estimated at just over $16.5 million. Approximately 85% of those are residential properties, the remaining are non-residential. And that has led us to look at what are some opportunities to work with residential properties impacted. We are trying to get a good handle on this and learn from what's out there in terms of the experience of other cities and just generally what's available to us. We are a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of this is really a program that gets implemented, applying through the state, and then the state makes the request of the federal government on our behalf. And the state is still working on the packets that go out to cities to help give information to each city. And our last information we had is that those packets will come out by the end of this week, or first of next, to each individual city, and then provide something like a three-week period for cities to review and then respond about their general interest. And that's a word we just got this afternoon from Tennessee Emergency Management, or TEMA, and they would be coordinating and providing information on that. And that packet of information's forthcoming, and we'll be reviewing that. But in the meantime, we have been reviewing the flood program. It has been updated somewhat recently, but it is detailed, it has got very specific guidelines in terms of what qualifies and what doesn't. And when we get the TEMA packet, I think we'll have a better full picture of that. It is not a quick fix. The word we get is that it takes up to 18 months to get dollars back from the federal government on this. The state is working hard to get it, the program started as quickly as possible, so that that timeline can start, but, you know, it may be less, but the up-to number that we consistently are hearing is about 18 months that this could take to see dollars flow back. You know, I don't wanna, I hesitate to get into a lot of specifics on the program, because we've picked up bits and pieces, but we want to see the packet that comes from TEMA that gives us the more official guidance on it, in terms of how they're implementing the program and applying it to this situation. But it does have a specific guidance that it provides to you, and we've got to do public notice and public hearing related to the program itself, and it is a voluntary program, where the property owner chooses to participate with the city. But we've also got to tie this into a broader public benefit, in terms of serving a storm-water management system and approach, and we've got to show the benefit there, and/or a cost-benefit related to those properties, in that, you know, there is regular damage, regular costs incurred by homeowner and by city in responding to properties that are frequently flooded, and that we, we look at that being a benefit in terms of expenses avoided in the future because you've acquired that property. So, those are some of the basic guidelines. Again, we'll get more out of this as we go forward. And I just wanted to take a minute, too, to comment about how we look at and think about the city's role in working with property owners and what we try to do. Our first role is always about safety, both in terms of the immediate response and how we work with cleanup and helping people stay in or out of unsafe structures, but then also move to safety in terms of the long-term viability of the structure, that it is fixed, repaired, if it's eligible to be repaired appropriately, and so that it's viable long-term for the well-being and safety of that inhabitant and of the broader community. We also are a resource in terms of repair and mitigation, assisting folks as they work through the needs and make, and any repair needs that they have. We can also serve as a conduit for programs like we talked about today. We also may be, along with others in the community, an opportunity to identify resources and pair resources with individuals that have needs. But we are not the insurance company either. That's, you know, in terms of the payments for private repairs to private structures, that's really more of a relationship with the insurance company, or what FEMA is able to provide, or Small Business Administration is able to provide in terms of loans, et cetera. And we work to be a conduit to those agencies to help people work with them, because that's their role, to help with individual repair and recovery. And other than that, we really serve as a resource. And then we also look at storm-water management, and how do we create a system that functions well and functions better given typical events, and the 100-year event tends to be the primary guidance there. So, those are just a framework that I would offer to you, that we try to look at in terms of what is our role in trying to help citizens and help property owners as they recover, focusing on safety, focusing on guidance in repair and mitigation, being a conduit to those that can help, both documenting damage, showing the magnitude of damage, so that they can work with their insurers or work with the federal government on claims, and then looking overall at storm-water management and other public benefit programs that help control and manage what comes of a typical storm. What I'd like to do is just, any questions we can answer that you may have, or those in the audience that may have, that we can try to answer. We are trying to learn as we go, we're a little ahead of the information from the state as we're trying to understand it, but the more definitive information is that packet we'll get from TEMA, hopefully by the end of this week, that we will then launch into and respond to. And just get your blessing to continue to do this kind of work in researching and developing the toolkit, if you will, that we can try to have available for working with properties and looking at what meets the needs of what citizens are trying to achieve. And the comment I'd, the last comment I make is, we work with citizens in all different situations, and we have people everywhere from wanting a buyout and wanting to be done with the property and the situation they're in, and looking for someone to purchase them, to wanting to restore their home to the way it was before the flood, to wanting to tear down and rebuild something new at the property they're at. We've got people all over that spectrum that want to achieve different, those different goals, and we're trying to work with them within the regulations and within the law to explore all those options, I guess I would say. So, that's the other thing we run into, is everybody wants a little something different in a lot of ways, and we're trying to provide as many resources as we can to look at all those different options with people as they look at their personal needs.
My first question is, you mentioned eligible to be repaired. That is one of the things that I'd like more information about. Are there some structures that are not eligible to be repaired, and can someone give some information about what qualifies?
Yeah. Well, in my reference to that, and I'll ask Mr. Luthman to come up if he would, just to address it with me, so if I misstate any of it. What I'm referring to there is, we've got within our own building codes and within our obligations in terms of participating in flood programs and flood relief, if a property is greater than 50% damaged, it is not eligible to be repaired, it needs to be rebuilt. And that's a distinction that we, you know, we don't have in a lot of cases, but we have in some cases, and those are ones that we need to work with. And, you know, if you're over 50%, and you're ready to rebuild, we'll work with you as a rebuild with the standards that are in place for that. If you're looking at 50% greater damage and you want to restore, that's really not permitted. We've got to look at a rebuild in that case, or look at the calculation in how we arrive at that 50%. That's a discussion we can have, based on the estimate of cost to repair, or the initial value of the property to begin with. That's a calculation that we're responsible to make, and that FEMA looks to us to make on a local level. But I would say, we will work with citizens on explaining that calculation and hearing from them if they have other data that tells us differently about that 50% calculation, be it the market value of that home, or the cost to repair that home. We make the best estimate we can, but they may have information, say, from a licensed contractor that might shed further light on that and cause us to reexamine that 50% threshold calculation. So, that's one element there. And you may have folks who want to just demolish the structure at that point, if it's that far gone, and look to either rebuild or not rebuilding at all.
When you say rebuild, you mean just bulldoze it down and start in that spot that may flood again?
You would have to build above the floodplain elevation when you do that, but you could rebuild, but have to be a foot above the flood elevation.
Which flood?
The 100-year.
Do you accomplish that by bringing in dirt, or do you accomplish that by putting in a large crawl space?
Large crawl space.
You'd have to, yeah. You'd have to get the...
You'd have to build the house up.
And we would make the front of the house look like a two-story house.
So, Gary, if I, correct me if I missed anything, you're more the expert than I.
So, the rebuild would be required if it's greater than 50% damaged?
You can't, yeah, if you're greater than 50%, we've got to look at the rebuild versus the restoration or repair.
Yeah. When you say restore or rebuild.
Repaired or rebuilt, repaired or rebuilt, those are the two. Repair or rebuild. No, don't use restore, repaired or rebuilt. So, repaired is 50% or less, if you choose, rebuilt is more than 50%. And I think one thing, that currently, what we're, the only thing that we can go by on value is what the property is appraised at on the tax records. We really have no ability to do anything else. So, that's our basic number. Now, there are certainly some opportunities for values to be greater than that, and so I think that's what Eric was talking about. If the, if you want to have your property appraised pre-flood, or if you have an appraisal on your property that reflects greater than the appraised value on the tax records, then we certainly will use that information in our calculation of 50%. The other thing is, you know, and I have to commend Gary, I mean, he's worked daylight till dark going through and looking at these properties, and we've got 350 of them, so to speak, and what he's having to do is put an estimate, and it's the best he can, is with the information that he has in his head and looking at this property, what the cost to repair that is. So, if a homeowner has an estimate from a licensed contractor, and it's, you know, if it's less than what Gary says, then we'll use that number. We're not going to use, have to use our number. But, you know, in some cases, and this is what Eric was saying, in some cases, we may have a homeowner who wants the value of the repair to be less than 50%, and we may have another homeowner who wants it to be more than 50%. I mean, again, there's not, every single homeowner has a different situation, and so we're having to deal with those individually, and we're pleased to do that. But, you know, it's not vanilla, everybody's not getting vanilla. And so, if a homeowner, if we come in and Gary says it's 52%, let's say, and the homeowner wants to repair and not rebuild, then it would be incumbent upon that homeowner to prove to us that the damage is less than 50%.
And they can do that by...
And they can do that by appraisal, or by a licensed contractor.
And we will work with them on that. And there is still, even beyond that, an appeal opportunity to go to the Board of Building...
Building Board of Appeals.
Building Board of Appeals, sorry, that can, you know, go beyond, you know, and confirm or deny based on the information presented that way, too. So, there is a further check on that process, but we will work with people ahead of that process, too, to look at those numbers and do that 50% calculation. But that is our responsibility to make that local interpretation and apply it to these homes.
And currently, if Gary says, and we have to rely on Gary's expertise, if Gary comes back and says, "Property X has more than 50% damage," then we cannot issue a building permit for them to repair their property. It cannot be done, because that would be violation of our codes and our ordinances. So, that's when we need to talk to the homeowner and tell the homeowner what their options are. And I will tell you that, you know, this, we had a three-hour meeting going over this yesterday. I mean, this is information that we're trying to, you know, we're now moving into the stages, as I said, we work with bigger pictures and we're working our way down, and this is certainly an issue, and we're not sure how many homes that might be. I think our calculation, do you have a better number now, but 10 to 15 homes, maybe?
It's greater than 50%?
That may be greater than 50%, and that's the number right now that we think.
And that is a, you know, with certain homes, we're getting a better chance to look at and truly assess damage, so that is a, that is truly a moving target number, but it's in that range.
And that's the information we really wanted to get out tonight to everybody, to let them know kind of where we are. And the other thing is, if you're 48%, and, you know, you want your home to be more than 50% for whatever reason, there may be some issues later on with regard to the mitigation issue, or, I mean, because that number is used for calculation of the flood mitigation program by TEMA and FEMA. So, our insurance company may, you know, you may, and I don't know what the parameters are, but if you don't like our calcula, I think what I'm gonna say is, if you don't like our calculation, it's not cut and stone. We are more than willing to have a discussion, to look at facts, to sit down with, you can sit down with staff, and individually, and this is more of an individual issue, this isn't an issue that can be decided here tonight, so we don't, you know, need to, not that I wouldn't want to hear what you have to say, but that's, this is not the place to have that discussion. We will be open, you know, we're here every day of the week and available to sit down, to listen to your individual concerns, and to see what your options are. And we, I promise you, that you will, you will know everything that we know. And I know it's got to be frustrating for us to say, especially in the stream mitigation issue, flood mitigation issue, we just don't know. But we just don't know. And it would be worse for us to make something up and tell you, and then find it not to be true later on, than for us to say, "We're waiting for the state to tell us what that program is." And that's, that's all that we can promise. We hope to have more information, as Eric said, the latter part of this week. We are, like I said, we are working with all the, you know, with Marsha Blackburn, with Carl Dean's office, and with FEMA, and with TEMA to try to incorporate that. So, I think, and that's what I want to, that's what I want to offer to everyone here tonight that has a concern about that. If we haven't addressed your issue, or even if we have and you still have some more questions, please call, you can call the administration office if you want, we'll set up a meeting, and we'll sit down with you as soon as we can to listen to your individual needs and concerns, and we'll just see what we can do. And promise you, you will have our ear, we will listen to you, and we will give you all the facts that we have at that day. We want to be as reasonable and as fair as we possibly can, but I would also say, you have to acknowledge that we also have some federal restrictions and guidelines that we have to follow by law. So, there's, we have some flexibility in some regards and not some in others, and we will tell you what those flexibilities are. And I think that's probably enough speech for me, but...
Well, I know we don't have the whole story right now, but some of the concerns and calls that we probably all are getting is regarding buyout, for the city to buy property. Can we talk a little bit more about that, and do we have the answers to that yet? Are we in the real estate business? I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Well, that's what the mitigation program that would run through TEMA would really help get at, in terms of really leveraging federal dollars, and that's a 75% grant, but it's got quite a process to it, and it's got specific requirements that we're still trying to get a handle on. You know, and you, at the end of the day, you've got to show how that property purchase fits into a broader plan in terms of storm and flood mitigation. And so, you know, the purchase of the property's got to show how that fits into our ability to better manage the flow that comes from a storm in the 100-year floodplain, basically. So, that's, that's what we've got to show as a broader application, and/or this idea of cost-benefit, where you've got such severe repetitive loss that it just makes sense from a cost, public cost standpoint, that you're not having to continually go back and expend in terms of recovery and cleanup, if you've got those that continually happen. And one of the pieces is just not those impacted by this one extraordinary event, but is there a documented experience of damage over multiple events, especially in a 10-year timeframe, or multiple events that have a, kind of a running total that gets closer? Sort of a cost-benefit analysis that goes play, it goes through that as well, in terms of saying, how much damage continually happens to this property, what would be spent at one time to control that property and remove the structure? Is that worth it, from the costs avoided in the future?
And I might just ask those in the audience, if there's a general question that we might not have answered, I'll be glad to try to answer them if we can here. If it's, again, if it's home-specific, be much better to do that in a one-on-one meeting. So, if there's, if someone has a question... So if there's, if someone has a question that we haven't answered, yeah.
My name's David Mahan.
Well, unfortunately, we got to get it on the microphone, so everybody, there may be somebody watching that might have that same question.
Come on up.
Come and sit right here.
You have seat right here.
And we're not, we're not scary, so.
That's all right. I'm David Mahan. I live on Ewingville Drive. You said that if the cost projection to repair it is 50%, then we can't do that? That we would have to rebuild and raise it at least a foot above floodplain? Well, we've heard over and over again that this is historic flood, 500-year, 1,000-year flood, and if you're already built at least a thousand, at least a foot over floodplain, over the 100-year floodmark, what do we do then? You know, do we still, does it still fall within the same criteria?
You'd be allowed to re-repair.
That we'd be allowed to go on it and put it back?
You'd be allowed to repair it, yes.
So is your, is the stipulation, as far as a 50% mark for restoration or repair, is that predicated upon being below that floodplain line?
In most cases, yes. Yes.
So if we're out of the floodplain now, and it's just because of-
And you exceeded 50%.
You're fine.
And you exceeded the 50%.
That's another good question, but I don't know if I could answer that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Why would he not be allowed? If he's out of the floodplain, why couldn't he repair his bill?
Did you were out of the floodplain?
Yeah, out of the floodplain.
That's the damage exceeded the limit.
Now, this is hypothetical, but, you know, but, you know, but I am out of the floodplain. But if the numbers come to repair, and the numbers are peculiar sometimes.
All over the board, right?
Yeah, they are. But if they come back and you say, "Oh, well, these numbers, you know, they exceed 50% of what we understand the value of this property to be," but I'm out of the floodplain. And it was just a result of this event.
Of an extraordinary event.
Oh, we're still bound by all of those other-
I don't think so.
No, we don't think so.
No.
Yeah, I think that's a question we have to verify. If you answer more definitely, it's-
But our codes have, our code, and Gary knows it better than I do, but my understanding is, is that the issue is the 100-year flood. And our codes say that now, if you wanted to build a new house in a floodplain, you, well, you really couldn't, but a commercial structure or something, you could be, you could build it a foot above the 100-year floodplain, and you'd be a residential, you can't, so that's a whole different issue. But if you're above it now, I don't believe, our codes say that you can rebuild it, because you're not in violation of that issue.
Repair.
Repair. You can repair it.
Repair.
Yep. Okay. So I wouldn't just check the relations.
But we will make sure, and I'll tell you what we might do. We'll take those questions down, and we will put them on the website.
Yeah.
We will, if there's specific questions-
I think there's someone else.
-like that, we will put it on the website in the next couple of days when we get an answer to that.
He also might want to leave.
And if you want to leave your name or number, we'll get back to you. But again, let's, don't deal with individual issues, broader spectrum. And if you want to come forward, please do.
I'm also from Ewingville Drive. How do you initiate the process of being looked at on, you know, her house? Like, do we need to apply for a permit to get you guys to look at us? Is that how it goes?
We initially came around right after the flood and made a initial preliminary assessment. Then we've been back a second time, sometimes. So, look, after more debris has been removed from the home, floors cleared out, and so we can get an approximate estimate. So we've been back, and we make those assessments and place them on a chart, and we look at the appraised value of the house.
I understand that. My question is, like, for each individual out here that has got concerns about whether they're going to get demolished or banned or whatever, how do we start that? Like, do I get a, come to get a permit for you guys to tell me, "This is where you're at, you can't do it"?
If you come to get a permit, we're going to ask for a contractor's statement-
Okay.
-saying, "What is the cost of this construction? If it exceeds 50% of the value of your home, we will not issue a permit."
Let me answer your question. If, I'll answer your question, sometimes he doesn't.
I might go sit.
Here's what you're going to do. If we haven't been there, then you dial 794-7012 tomorrow morning. 794-7012 tomorrow morning at 8:30. And you say, "This is my address, I've had damage, I need someone to come look at it."
So what, you guys have been there, right?
We hopefully have.
Yeah, I think you have.
The other thing to make sure you've done is registered with FEMA. Because there's a whole other FEMA assessment they do. They have FEMA folks come out.
I guess my question is, how do you get to the next step? What do we need to do? Just sit and wait for you guys to tell us?
Contact us.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The answer that Mr. Loveman just began to give this gentleman is different than the answer that was just given to the other gentleman.
Which is, which is, the gentleman came up and, I mean, Mr. Loveman, if I understood correctly, just said, "If you come in and present a contractor's estimate of X, and X exceeds .5 of your appraised value, we will not issue you a permit."
But the other gentleman's question was, if he was out of the floodplain, what would we do?
They have to determine whether they're in the floodplain or out of the floodplain.
His question was out of.
So my, actually, my question, just to be on the safe side, I'm going to ask you one more time. I just called this number.
Yes.
I said, "This is me, what do I need to do"?
Well, just say, say, "I haven't been," or maybe you have been inspected.
You may have been.
You guys have been.
So I live at this address, and we do need to notify everyone that we've had an inspection. I don't know, have we figured out how we're doing that?
In some locations, we have not been able to get anybody to come to the door.
But let's, let's talk about people that have. How are they being notified that we've gone and we've inspected?
One-on-one at the site.
And if you, but if nobody's there, what do we do?
We've left information, we're going to call our office in FEMA to apply.
So if someone doesn't, if someone hasn't had anything on their door, are you saying that they haven't talked to anybody, you haven't been to their house?
That's possible, yes.
Is it possible or probable?
Well, in some cases, we, the information's called in.
From one of your inspectors?
From somebody, you know, not just, someone calls it in.
Okay, so let me, let me, to everybody here, let me say again, 794-7012. Call tomorrow morning, give your name, your address, and we will return the phone call. We probably won't talk to you at that moment. We will return the phone call with the information that, yes, you have been inspected, and here's the information that we have, or no, you haven't, and we will be out, and we will give you a time when we will be there. And it won't be, you know, it won't be, you know, next Thursday from 8:00 to 5:00, we'll be specific about when we're going to be there. And try to get at least those answers, those questions answered as quickly as we can, because that, that seems to be, it doesn't seem to be, I know, it's a big issue. And, you know, if you're 30%, then you know what your options may be. If you're 80%, you pretty much know what your options are going to be. I think the questions we have now are going to be in that 40% to 60% range in how we deal with those numbers. So, and again, I don't think there are a lot of numbers, a lot of, a lot of you may not know what your percentage is. I mean, it may be 25%, and you can do whatever you want to do. So with, as long as you get a permit, and we will issue permits on those kind of things. And they're still free, yes.
So in other words, if you already have a permit, it's okay to repair. Is that correct? If you issued a permit?
By issuing a permit, we've indicated that you're under the 50%, and you're good to go.
Right.
Okay.
But one more thing, the meeting tonight, I had no idea about. One of my neighbors called me. Is there any way that you guys could put something on the internet or?
It's on the, it was on the website, and the data was there, and it's on our Channel 10, and I would ask you-
Just a minute. It just said flood update report.
Well, and that's really all this is.
Right, but that was the same thing, and it did not have any documentation to go with it.
Well, we don't have any documentation to get that?
Well, I'm just saying, though, when you say it's all up there, I'm just saying, it just stated flood.
And I think where we go from here is, as we get more information, and as this board decides or how we want to proceed with a property mitigation program or not, then that would probably warrant some-
Yeah.
-specific community meetings about how this might work and how we work with people.
Without question.
But we're not there yet, but that would be forthcoming with, you know, in terms of the direction we get in terms of program implementation.
And one of the requirements of the TDEC program is that we do have public hearings. And so that, that will be a part. But I think what, the first step is for every, for us to be able to tell everyone really which category they're in. They're either less than 50% or more than 50%. And that, that really is a dividing line, and that tells you your direction.
Wait a minute, I'm still confused. And then you-
And the 50% doesn't-
And the flood.
The 50% doesn't matter if you're not in the floodplain.
You're right. I failed to mention that. 50% or not, but you still have, if you're out of the floodplain, you can come and get a building permit, and you can be fine.
You may be thoroughly underwater, but still be out of the floodplain?
That's possible. That's possible.
There's some of that.
There are some of those, because of the magnitude of this storm.
Yeah. Now, that's a 100-year floodplain, and that was, that's our requirement. 100-year.
Well, here's a good question. In your opinion, Mr. Loveman, are these heights the 100-year flood heights?
Some locations, it was almost right on it, and other locations, it was above it.
And below it in some locations. We looked at a case today, when we looked at the case today on a commercial property that is in the 100-year floodplain and got in the water. So there was some difference to that. Okay, is everybody okay? Okay.
I'm kind of getting a little upset here.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can help you.
Please sit down.
My name's Jay Martin, I'm on Ewingville, Gabi's wife. Codes came in, I was there the very first day after the flood. I think they were in there Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember when. And we're just not finding out about this 50% thing. We've spent thousands of dollars getting the house demolished and getting it sprayed from mold. That was my biggest fear. I didn't want it sitting there. And now we're out, thousands of dollars, and we may have to demolish it. How long ago should we have been notified about this? Is this something you guys just learned about? I mean, why is it three weeks later, we're just finding out about this?
Did you get permits for the work that you guys done?
As far as the demolishing goes?
Yeah.
I don't know. Is that something that we-
No, I doubt it.
Did you have the permit to demolish?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, you guys know we're doing that, because you've been picking up the truck. No, this is not volunteers. We had a company come in and do it, because we were afraid of having it done wrong.
So the question is, have you started new construction back?
No. No, I mean, we, and we just found out about this. What I'm saying is, is we, we're already at thousands of dollars, because we've had it demolished and sprayed and dried and fanned and everything else, but, you know, if we have to have it demolished, it's money that we wasted.
We're in the floodplain.
We're in. We're in. One side of the street's in, one side of the street's out.
Did you have insurance or?
Yeah.
Okay, so you work with your insurance company to do that work?
Well, it's been kind of an ongoing ordeal with both me and our neighbor, because we use the same demolition crew, which actually I'm going to be contacting probably Marsha Blackburn about, to try and get some help with that. But I mean, it's just still, you know, I mean, it's thousands of dollars, and we didn't know about this 50% thing or anything like that. No one mentioned that when they came through our house.
But has your insurance told you to go ahead? You've talked to your insurance company.
Yeah, yeah.
Insurance company's giving you the go-ahead to start.
Because I don't have any insurance in doing this.
All right, but she does. So let's talk about this one real quick, and then we'll do that one. But, so you're saying you have flood insurance?
Mm-hmm.
And so you've talked to your insurance company, and they've given you the go-ahead to start this procedure?
Right.
How does that play into that, everybody?
Well, your first line of defense is, your insurance company will work with the costs associated with recovery.
Well, I think what she's saying is, if she had known that she wasn't going to be allowed to repair, she would have just pushed the whole thing on itself.
Right, yeah.
And not spent money taking drywall and carpet and flooring out and having mold abated. She'd have just pushed it in.
That's what I was most worried about.
And if it gets pushed in now, then she spent thousands of dollars.
But an inspector does not know what's underneath till it's torn out.
Yeah.
So the assessment, I think-
So they came in before, I don't think they've been back since.
But we'll come back at this stage. I mean, it's not a one-shot deal. A lot of these, you make an initial assessment, there's cleanup, and you're better able to see the conditions of, you know, of the house after the cleanups happened, and then they can make a more complete assessment of truly what the repair costs are versus the valuation.
So why, why were we talking about this?
I don't believe that your, your cleanup costs are not in vain, because you've got to do that so that we can make an appropriate evaluation of the damage. Okay? Just, just looking at the damage itself may not be sufficient, because we can't see the extent of it till you've cleared out the debris that has to be cleared out anyway.
I thought you guys were marking this like, marking the wall. That's, whatever it hit, that's not it? That's not true?
That's the first, that's the first kind of gross step is, how much water? And that is sort of a FEMA chart that says, a percentage gets assigned to the height of the water in a living space. And so that's sort of a rough first number. And then, now that the cleanup happens, then our inspectors are able to really get a better view and make a more complete judgment about the impact of, of the damage.
So do we need to call to have someone come? Are you guys going to come back around just whenever?
First, I need to ask, how many inches of water did you have in your house?
Well, let's don't get into that right now. I think you need to call, give your address, and then we'll go through it individually.
What we need to do is be able to go with you-
Yeah.
-to look at the house, so we can see everything, because that's one of the problems. We have some properties we haven't been able to get inside of. And so if we can get inside of them, then we can really make a more of a full assessment of the damage and get to that number.
They've been in our house. I mean, I was there, and I think you were there.
Okay. Yeah. Well, guys, come on.
Going back to my question, don't we need to first establish what the elevation is of the finished floor? Because she may be out of the floodplain, and all of her anxiety and stuff may be ill-placed.
That's right.
If that is, you know, if that's the criteria where the 50% thing comes into play, tell everybody how we establish what the floodplain level is, and then what our finished floor level is.
The building permit, that's the process of obtaining a building permit.
But we didn't have to give our finished floor elevation on the building permit?
If you're just remodeling or restoring.
The question is, is how do we know?
Repairing.
How do, how do we know where the finished floor is?
You have to have a surveyor come in and determine what that height is.
Is it not on, on any of the papers elsewhere?
We can tell you, like, it's 644 in your neighborhood, and your house may be at 640. So you'd be susceptible to full flood of floodwater.
Right, but, but on the initial, when the house was built, would they have done, shot the finished floor elevation for that?
No. Back at that time, those houses in Ewingville were not part of a floodplain program. Franklin did not enter into the program until 1977.
Because we need to, we need to find out where floor elevation is in relation to flood in that area.
All right, let's, let's, yeah.
One of the things I'd urge people to do is call us, and we'll set up a time to meet with you individually, because each of these instances is sort of its own separate case. And the best way for us to help you is to talk about your individual case and look at it and understand it, as opposed to trying to make a lot of blanket statements for folks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just real briefly, my name is John Young, and I'm working with the Jenkins family at 126 Thompson Alley, myself and a larger group, and also the Stewart family at 405 and 407 Lewisburg. And in talking with the families, in the past, the city, and I'm not sure that their elderly folks and their memories, not serving them correctly maybe, but whether it was the city or the city in conjunction with the historical society, had approached them in years past about possibly purchasing their property. about possibly purchasing their property. And being a history teacher myself, the Civil War was basically fought across that property from what I understand between Carton and Carter House. Would the city, if the federal mitigation program, for some reason, if it would not apply to these folks, would the city entertain possibly purchasing this property? Because if they fixed the property up and they stay there, the chances of them wanting to ever sell it diminish. So, that's one. And then, two, the other thing, 407, the history of 407, I don't believe is complete yet. I don't, I think we can't assume that, that we know that that house wasn't standing there during the Civil War. And if it was standing there, it seems like maybe it was moved a few hundred yards or a few yards. If it was standing there during the Civil War, it seems like it would have historical significance. So, I would just ask that the city, we make sure that we, before we bulldoze it down, we make sure that we.
First of all, we're not bulldozing anything at the moment. We don't have, but, but we will look in that. There are some properties that have historical issues that we, that may take on some special character that we will look at. So, and we will do that.
Thank you very much.
I just want to clarify, oh, I'm Ben Johnson, live on Yuengville Drive 126. I just want to clarify something. If you have a building permit and we've been issued a building permit, if you've got, we're dried out and ready to move forward, do we need to wait until we start building back after what we've learned tonight? Or are we clear? Do we have the green light to go along and start?
We let you have a building permit because we looked on our chart and showed that you were less than fifty percent.
Okay, so we're clear then? In other words, if you've got one.
Go ahead, have at it.
Green, you can go.
Have at it.
Good story.
And get started quick. Can we change our mind?
Seven thirty tomorrow.
I didn't say I had to print that. I was just, I had a little levy, I know, but, anyway. All right, you're good.
It was a happy story.
All right, so I think we're going to, we're going to move on.
And you've got one more question being asked back there, so.
I have a question about.
Oh, appraised value is also your property, not just the structure, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
Can I just?
You may, yes.
Hi, my name is Elise Jones. My parents lived out in Thompson Alley and their house was flooded. Well, there was many houses out there flooded. But, another house that was flooded out there, the gentleman that owns those, he has pulled out the paneling and redone all this stuff and he moved the tenants back in before that building was even dry. And nobody ever went in and inspected it.
You know about that, Gary?
That's correct, he did do that. We're setting our priorities and moving forward with this later on. And that property had a concrete floor in it. It had a crawl space but it also had a concrete floor. So, they did not have that much wood damage. We've looked at it but we haven't been in it. We can't, haven't been able to get inside yet.
Yeah, he's looking, there's going to be extenuating circumstances on many things. People that do things that, you know, he should have got a building permit and didn't. You know.
And I went in the gentleman's house to, just to take in some stuff in there and there was mud and water still in the house. It wasn't dried out.
And Gary will look at that and there may be a determination that he had more than fifty percent damage and can't do that. But, we have to assess them all individually and with 350 homes, that's a huge amount of effort and we're getting to them as quickly as we can.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so 794-7012. And is there one more?
Yes.
Okay.
Come on ahead.
I'm Keith Sanders, a construction company out of Brentwood in Jackson, Tennessee. The same property that she's speaking of, we actually visited the site and we looked at it. I saw the property across the street that she's also speaking of. Her father's property is already elevated and if his home took on water, Mr. Gary, it went up to the mailbox on his. The house across the street went up past the windows just as well. Now, my biggest concern for them is they put a stop-work order on this particular property when they were trying to drive this property out and they also put a demolish on it and gave it 60 days to be taken care of. Now, I don't want that family worrying because it shouldn't be a worry, especially if the property right across the street is already being lived in and the water got just as high in that property and you're saying it had concrete floors while there on the crawl space. The water did come up and it would be common sense of the fact of tearing all the old flooring out and bring it in. But, you guys stopped the work order before they could do that for you to see the structure of the house. And this is an all masonry block home on this particular property that she was just speaking of.
It's an all masonry block home.
Okay, well, and.
I'm talking about the one that their father lives in, not the one that was.
We're not, we can't, excuse me, we cannot solve that issue tonight. We still need to, you need to call the number tomorrow morning, set up an appointment.
My biggest concern, I'm going to cut you off, is with the fact of you guys issuing the fact of 60 days.
We're not going to demolish anything in 60 days, period.
That specific situation with the 60 days was an error that's been corrected and reposted without a date.
Yeah.
Because we are not to the stage that we can set any kind of timeline. Yeah, so that was an error that was made and that posting's been reposted.
So, can they come in and get something that's written and stated from you to make sure that they have that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. I appreciate your patience and I hope we can all get through this to some sort of satisfaction. Okay, we're going to move on to item number seven, which is a discussion regarding self-insurance program for workers' compensation with TML representatives.
One of the things that's incorporated in your proposed budget, one of the issues we touched on, is the opportunity to look at a self-insured approach to our workers' compensation program. And the budget itself is not built with an assumption that we make that change. It's built with a continuation of the current approach. But, we are very interested in looking at it and need to make a decision if we'd like to approach it through a self-insured retention approach. To do so, really by the middle of June, we need to make that decision and move forward with TML if we want to, want to do that. And in fact, TML, when we were meeting with them about various insurance needs, raised this as an opportunity for us, that our, our performance in workers' compensation and our program overall was an excellent candidate to look at self-insured retention, which is essentially what you do with medical insurance now. And so, they gave us a very interesting presentation that sort of showed us that and how, you know, our past experience might have translated into cost savings to the city had we had a self-insured approach. And the packet that they're handing out covers the entirety of our, our risk program, but really the purpose tonight is to talk to you about workers' compensation because that's where we're looking, making potentially a change in our, our approach to it overall. Our philosophical approach is, is the one change that we're looking at here. So, we'd like to make sure you understand that and what that would mean and go through that. Again, self-insured retention would provide a attachment point at which insurance would kick in for basically what I would call worst case or catastrophe that was extremely expensive. We would have insurance coverage above that attachment point. So, we would still be protected in an extreme case, but then provides the opportunity for us to manage those costs below that and really potentially save dollars from what we've been putting into premium heretofore. So, I'll let TML folks take the lead here and.
Well, I'm Randy Williams, I'm with the TML Risk Management Pool and this is Pam Lynn. We're underwriters, that underwrites your account. First off, how many in here know what the PML Pool is about? If I could quickly tell you a little bit about our history. That's okay because I want to make sure you understand what this is all about. We were created in seventy-nine with inter-local agreements, starting with Athens and Hendersonville. Inter-local agreements to create an insurance pool, which you're a member of and you're an owner of. Our board of directors is made up of managers and mayors from across the state. We're not just another insurance company. We're a member-owned by the municipalities. We're more of a risk management, loss control focus. That's kind of why we're here tonight. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. We were the first, what happened back in seventy-nine is we couldn't get insurance on law enforcement officers, so we were forced to look at some pooling arrangements and TML did that and that was when the pool was created. And so, we were the first liability pool in the nation. Believe it or not, Franklin paid the first premium into the pool back in the late seventies. We have, we started out in seventy-nine with 22 members, it's grown to about 460 entities or more now. Give you an indication, we had 230 officers insured in seventy-nine, there's 5,248 now in the workers' comp program. There was 654 employees in eighty, now there's 40,000 employees, more than 40,000. And property values, property program started in 1989, started out with 170 million in total insured values. It's up to four point five, I'm sorry, 5.8 billion dollars in property covered across the state now. As I said, we focus on risk management, loss control because our members have done such a good job in the last thirteen or fourteen years, we've averaged giving dividends back of 4.8 million dollars per year. Last two years, we gave more than 8 million dollars back in dividend. This year, this coming year, 2010-11 fun year, we're looking at a 9.7 million dollar give back in dividends. A lot of this is when we anticipate what the, what the costs of the losses are going to be, but when we have savings, we pass it back to the membership. In most cases, Franklin, Franklin in the past years have gotten great benefit out of that. We're pleased to have worked with Franklin for the last 30 years in their risk management program and we see it getting stronger. It's one of the reasons that we're here tonight because the way we see this, we want to see you retain more risk and pay less premium and look at reducing your total costs of risk. That's what we're really trying to do here. A lot of times what that takes is reinforcement of your risk management department, more activity in loss control and risk management, that when you take more retention in, and that's what you're looking at doing here, you're looking at taking more retention in. Pam's going to talk a little in detail about the self-insured retention program. She may give you a little history about what you're paying in premiums now and how you're set up now and just kind of gravitate into what we're, what we're talking about in the self-insured retention program. So, Pam, you want to take off and we'll, we may play back and forth here some, but.
Probably about three years ago, I think Franklin decided.
If you look at the next to the last page.
Last page on your hand.
Workers' compensation. Just on the workers' compensation page.
That first line shows what you paid last year. It was almost 6,000, well, 6,008, 608,000, excuse me, in premium. Like I said, it was probably about three years ago, you decided to go with a self-retention deductible of 200, $2,500. And on top of that, you, Randy indicated the member dividend, based on your past loss history and premiums paid, you received $146,000 in the dividend off of that, which brought your total premium as such cost for your work from comp down to 462,000. This year, you've already submitted your applications and we've calculated your premium, again, based on that $2,500 deductible, your premium is 547,407. And Franklin has distinguished of getting the most back of any of our members for your member dividend of 178,000. That, that just shows what you are doing from a loss control standpoint and that's what Randy says, it's kind of a combination of what your efforts are to bring your premiums down.
And I think we don't even entertain, we really don't try to entice cities or anybody to really look at this until they really have a good risk management program going and understanding what the retention of risk is going to be.
And this year's premium is based on a couple of factors that we've got indications that you are looking at and that is to increase your risk management staff and to adopt a reasonable indemnity policy. So, there's a little extra credit built into these premiums, that 400, or, excuse me, If that doesn't happen, you know, we'll look at those that could change next year depending on if these changes happen or not. But, we believe those changes will bring your premiums and losses down as well.
And you'll hear, you'll probably hear more about the reasonable indemnity policy from your HR folks and from your risk management folks. But, basically what that's all about is, is that if an employee is off from work, that you have a policy, you don't, you don't pay them any more than the 66 and two-thirds after they've been off from work a certain number of time, whatever you choose in policy. If you go greater than 90 days, we actually penalize you in premium for that. So, but if you, if you cut back, and I think now you go over 90 days some, if you take a policy and back that up some, then we can actually give more credit in them.
And this is really basically going with what the state law says.
Well, well, yeah, just going, if you just went.
Instead of going above it.
Yeah, there's, there's several this way you do it. And under workers' comp, under general policy, 66 and two-thirds of employees' average weekly wage is what they're going to receive in, in benefits. When you go above that.
After 90 days?
Well, if you go above that after 90 days, we penalize. Because comp doesn't require you to do that, it's just something you're doing. But, but here's, here's our, here's our point in that. As you're trying to work a risk management program, we're trying to keep everybody working, trying to keep everybody at work and getting, getting them back to work as soon as we can. If you're off and you're making 66 and two-thirds from a check on the workers' comp, then you're getting another third of your salary paid to you, you're actually making more money than you would be if you're at work because that, that 66 and two-thirds is not taxed. And then, the other third is the only thing that's taxed. So, you're actually making more money than if you came back to work. So, it, over a period of time, what we've seen is that's helped the whole work comp program do better.
The next column or paragraph down, we've given you some other options. Like I say, currently you're at $2,500 deductible for each claim. We've given you options for 5,000, 10,000 and 25,000 and show you the premiums and then the savings based on those numbers as well. And then, the self-retention program, we've, again, based on your size and loss history and everything, have set an attachment point of 595,000. So, any claims up to that point, you're responsible for paying. And we bill you those back on a monthly basis. Your employees or your medical providers won't see any of that. We pay the claims and then we bill you back as well as an 8% administration fee.
Claim, claims.
For the claims administration fee for handling that. And then, the premium is paid on top of that as well. So, that's the cost of that. Looking at this year, if, you know, the worst-case scenario, you would get a check back at billing time of 1,696. We've done a five-year studies based on your history and your premium and everything, your loss history. And that five-year, the savings would be 1.7 million dollars, an average of, over the five years of 3 and a half million dollars. Three and a half thousand.
350,000.
350,000, yes.
In other words, in other words, over the last five years, you could have saved 1.7 million or 350,000 per year. Now, that sounds, that sounds great, but I'll have to tell you, with what we deal with every day, you could have, it's kind of like San Francisco's, that one event that could really hurt you and cripple you. So, I think you, I think you, it's not that you've made bad decisions, you haven't done. I think you have to wait till the time is right. There's a lot of cities out here right now that probably, I would not recommend this kind of program in because I don't think it's, it's the time for them to do it. They don't have the, the thing, the mechanisms set up.
You've got to have the resources.
You've got to have the resources. And, and to reiterate on the 595,000 retention, what, you've got to really think through this because you could have 595,000 if worst-case scenario, you could pay out 595,000 plus the 8% in claims fees on top of that, then another, then you're going to pay us 176,000 in premium. Now, what's interesting about this is we're going to be, this, not many insurance companies say this, if you go this route, this year, we'll be paying you some money back. Not many people can say that because, because you've got 178,336 in dividends and the premium's on 176, 640. So, we're going to be paying you back this year, but.
After this year.
Next year might be another, another whole issue. We'll look at the whole self-insure, self-insured retention attachment point. We'll look at that attachment point again. It could go down or up next year. So, you got to, you got to look at that. But, I think, I think if you look at the history of Franklin, you look at a 40%, I think your loss ratio is like 40%. Is that, is that somewhere in there?
Forty-one, I think.
If you look at that and you look at the job that you're doing out there, you know, what, what we're really trying to do here is, is get every employee, every department engaged to understand that we are all risk managers. And any money that we can save in this whole program, it's going to go to benefit them somehow. Maybe, maybe a better raise or, or better facilities to work with or better equipment to work with. So, there, what, what we're, at the pool, what we're about is we want to make sure that we're not getting any more premiums from you than we need. And if you got the proper kind of program to handle this, we want to work with you. And I think that your department, HR and risk management and all the folks and Eric, you think you'll, you'll agree with me, we provide a lot of services to the city of Franklin. We continue, that's, that's a great thing because we gain a lot of benefit out of that too from statewide. But, but there's a, there's a lot of things here that you really have to be on board with. Your attitude of your employees need to be on board on a long-term basis and I think they're getting there, especially in the work, in the work comp ring if we look at the history.
Someone mentioned the 41% loss ratio. That is actually excellent. I mean, Franklin is a star member. Our benchmark usually is about 75, oh, 75%. If you exceed that, then we're losing money. So, 41% is excellent.
So, what do you mean when you say 41%?
The amount of dollars that you've paid in premium versus the amount of claims that've The amount of dollars that you've paid in premium versus the amount of claims that've been paid out. We've only paid out forty-one cents for every dollar of premium Franklin has paid.
Forty-one cents for every dollar you've paid in, and we've only paid out forty-one cents.
Which then tells you that that's where you calculate our loss history.
That's the full side on that dating number.
Exactly. Exactly. We're betting, Mayor, that you're going to continue that.
Right, that's right.
That is our five-year average, that forty-one percent.
I'm just so cynical, I think maybe you're betting that it's not going to be the same.
Not you, that's common.
Well, I would really hope, I mean, I...
You're talking about employee safety, I mean, we want everybody to be whole and well.
I'm just so cynical, but I think they're sitting there thinking, you've done so well for so long, something's bound to happen. We better get out of this now.
But remember, they're not a for-profit organization.
We have, we have made that point, we have made that point before. We have made that point when other cities, and I think even Franklin, maybe looked at some of these things before, and, well, is it really, is it really carried out long enough yet?
I just don't get, I just don't have insurance people come and tell me to lower my, lower my coverage and lower my premiums too often.
We're not an insurance company, I think that's the difference.
Well, I know, I know, it's just...
And it's based on your history. I mean, it's a projected and what you've been doing and loss control and all. And, you know, you can jump to the retention program, or you can graduate into, you know, take the $5,000, the $10,000, you know, see how you can manage that and budget for that and if that's livable.
The other, the other thing that is...
That's per person, I mean, per loss. Per loss, thank you.
Per loss.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
And that probably is too low.
The other piece that is part of the logic as to why we budgeted this the way we did, which is keep it at this, this second line here, the twenty-five hundred deductible. We budgeted it that way so that if we choose to either go to a higher deductible, like say even the 25,000, or step into the self-insured retention program, we would, we would have sort of a reserve built into this budget to begin with. And I would suggest that you continue to budget that way if we choose to do self-insured and use those dollars to build a workers' comp reserve.
Exactly.
And so we would start to build that so that we protect against that one bad year we might have while we continue to do all the best practices, management, things we've been doing and trying to move towards.
Would you set a limit on a reserve?
I think we would take, we would want to develop a policy with you that would say how we do that, how we calculate that, probably move with that attachment point would be kind of what I would suggest that we do. If TML comes back to us next year and says your attachment point is now $750,000, then we would want to have a reserve that may move with that.
What's your maximum exposure on a comp claim?
Unlimited.
Medical's unlimited.
Medical, medical's unlimited.
I understand medical's is unlimited, but say a straight-up death case.
Death, well, death case may not be as expensive as a...
Right, yeah.
Death case is probably pretty cheap, but actually, I hate to say it that way, but it's probably, but I don't, I don't really know how to tell you what, it could be...
It's state's budget.
It's not a, it's not a tort, it doesn't have a tort cap, doesn't have any kind of cap on it. There's all kinds of...
Well, there's a maximum, and there's a maximum compensatory rate, and there's...
Four hundred weeks at, according to what kind of injury you have or what your, what your impairment rating, if it gets into impairment rating for a person that's injured. There's a certain, and it's according to what their, what their salary, what their wages, average wages are. It's hard to say what the number is on that. I think the medical side of it is where the real...
Well, the medical's are always open.
That's where the real tough part. There's some more complicating pieces now when you get into the Medicare issues that we have to get signed off on.
Any more questions?
It's much like we did with medical insurance several years ago, and the first year we saved between two and a half and three million dollars on our claims. We have not gone up on what we budget, actually, we've gone down a little bit in the last five years that I've been here on medical. This is just an opportunity for us to save that, but like I said, if we want to take it in increments, but I just think, and I would think, twenty-five hundred deductible, we're really not letting them...
No. I agree.
So what's the recommended level?
How would you...
Well, you're saying go to the self-insured.
I'm recommending you go to self-insured. I think we ought to take that step based on where we are in the program we have. Now, I would also add to our, our risk staff a safety officer training position. That would essentially be offset in these premium costs that we've talked about with TML. That is something that has been identified within our leadership team, is something we could benefit from and target areas where we are experiencing injuries or loss now and make sure we're following up on that and doing a better job. So it would enhance what Rodney and Shirley do on their team and give that additional resource to our departments to better manage these costs. And so, you know, I look at this five-year history and this opportunity, knowing that we would need to build a reserve for this purpose to protect us against that extreme case, but I think there's a real opportunity to get the benefit of how we manage this, this element of our risk. It is very much like the health insurance that Shirley referred to. It's about a tenth of the cost when you look at it from a total cost factor in our organization, but it's one I think we've developed enough that we can get the benefit of what we're doing.
When you say extreme case, though, we have, aren't we covered for, you know, if you went to these different deductibles, we still are covered for these, for our costs?
Yes, yes, anything above that.
That's what it says.
You still have a cost above, you need to protect, if you're in self-insured, you need to be ready to take that on through your own reserves. And so that's what I'm saying, we would either, really, in this budget already be built in because we have this high premium of over half million dollars that we would essentially not be paying.
In a nutshell, in a nutshell, our experience is that we have paid more premiums than our claims have paid.
By quite a bit.
That's exactly right. And that if we simply say, rather than pay the premiums for sure, we will take the risk and expose ourselves to what we hope to be consistent claim levels. The problem is, the bubble buster comes if you have three massive injuries in a year that top you out, in which case you turn to the attachment point for anything above that. And then we, and then in that year, we made a bad bet. And hopefully in the next year, it returns to what our historic data shows.
Right. You look at this over time. You may have an occasional bad year that you exceed this, that that wouldn't have been the best decision for that individual year. But if you look at a five-year history like this, and a million seven that we spent in premium that we could have had in savings, that's where it starts to make a lot of sense. And especially if you target some of that savings towards building a reserve that helps you be prepared for the inevitable, probably, one bad year that will happen sometime. It will happen sometime. We hope it doesn't, but it very well may.
I think the other thing it does for you is it, is it entices you to look internally on your loss control and your risk management programs. That's what we're all, we're all about, we're not about selling insurance, that's the last thing we want to do. What we're about is for you to control your risk internally the best you can. And if you're doing that and you can take some of that internal risk, we're all going to be better off.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, consideration of Resolution 2010-36, a resolution approving private chapter number fifty-eight, House Representative Bill 3974, passed by the Hundred and Sixth General Assembly of the State of Tennessee. We're just approving what we've already approved once before, so, same way as on ten. Any questions on that? On eleven, okay, item number twelve, consideration of the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT agreement for the Hillsborough Road improvements from State Road Ninety-Six to Claude Yates Drive. David, you want to just explain that real quick?
I hope you had a chance to read the memo. It pretty well explains the reason we're going through this process. We did have indication from TDOT staff that we would not have to have a contract for several years during the process of this project. Now we're being told we do. When I wrote the memo, Shawna had not had a chance to review the contract. We do have an email into the Law Department, or Shawna does, concerning the contract or agreement. There's questions. We do need to get it approved or something approved as quick as possible. And Shawna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we would ask that the board do is give Shawna and I the ability to get this settled and go on and approve this because this is delaying our project. Because we cannot start any right-of-way acquisitions or anything like that on Hillsborough Road till we get this settled, so.
So...
Approve it contingent upon the language as approved by the Law Department and City Administrator.
Current attached contract, subject to final approval of the law...
Language.
Language of the Law Department.
City Administrator, City Engineer.
Law Department.
And substantially in the form of this agreement. I mean, you know, the same concept is there.
The problem is that contract acts as if we're getting money, we're exchanging money, they're doing, we're doing a project together. The only thing we're doing is we're doing a project in their right-of-way. That's the, that's what we're doing. And this, this contract does not reflect really what we're doing. There's a lot of requirements that shouldn't be required of us, and a lot of sections that talk about how we're going to exchange money, and this contract is way, way bigger than what we're doing. It's not even the same topic.
What we're talking about as far as if there's a substantial change that affects the city of Franklin, it will come back to you, we will not approve that. If it's a substantial change, especially if it's adverse to the city of Franklin, we will not, we'll come back to you. What we're trying to do is get some language eliminated that's not needed, which will not hurt the city of Franklin, be in city of Franklin's favor.
So approval contingent upon proper staff approval.
That's fine.
Okay, I have...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is a part of something, not this specific thing about having the contract with the state, but I spoke with our mayor and city administrator about looking at the totality of the Hillsborough Road project because since the flood has occurred, I think that there's a material change in the situation on a part of this project. And that would be the part that got flooded. And to tell you the truth, I did not catch until just then, and I had thought I had read this over, I thought it was talking about going from Claude Yates up to, to Mac Hatcher. I didn't catch that it was from Ninety-Six up to there.
We have, we have an agreement with TDOT already for what they call the intersection improvements, or what we called at the time, spot improvements. That is from Mac Hatcher to just about halfway across, south from Mac Hatcher, about halfway across the Franklin High School property. That is the project we have under contract right now, or under agreement with TDOT.
Under agreement.
The rest of it is then from that point back to Highway Ninety-Six West, so that's what this would be covered.
Well, as I say, now that I read this and finally understood that part of it, the other part of my concern, though, is it doesn't, doesn't concern this contract here, but it is that I think that considering what has happened in the last month, we need to reexamine or reassess what the city is planning to do in that area. And my thought on it was, you know, it was originally two parts, two, a two-part project, and I'm really interested in going forward with the part of it that would be the, I guess, road construction, which would be, and I think the comment was it probably would be separated from Del Rio North to Mac Hatcher because that's, that's really where you're going to get the increase in laneage on the property, I mean, on the, on the road, and doesn't include the part that was flooded extensively. And let us look at that part of it again. I just don't think that the plans that we have in place right now for the part that doesn't increase the lanes of traffic is something that we would want to go forward with until we look at it again. It may be that we look at it again and we say every bit of this is right, but I can tell you right now, if we had those walls up there, then those people would not have been able to get those vehicles out the way they did during the flood. And so I think, as I say, I think, I think it just needs to be looked at again.
I think we, and we did that, we'll bring that back at another work session or something to just discuss the overall project.
It's just because this came up, you know, right now is the reason that I'm talking about it here.
And I think that's...
But I'd like to see that.
Okay, item number thirteen, discussion regarding residential fire sprinkler process. In the last session, we excluded residential fire sprinklers in the building code that we, that we are passing tonight, I believe. And we just wanted to, at Mike's, at Mike's request, to develop a timetable as to what, how we move this other section, at least for further discussion. So...
Well, we, yeah, we, this is a timeline for you to respond to, we can alter it. The purpose and what our team in the Fire Department, Rocky and Andy in particular, wanted to identify what's already happened in terms of communication and education and getting the word out about what residential sprinkler is, what's already happened, and then what proposed meetings are there to meet with different stakeholders in the community to make sure they understand what this means, and then bring it ultimately to you for a work session or a part of a meeting like this to discuss what you ultimately want to do in terms of what gets implemented and built into our residential code. And so, you know, this gives you something to respond to and tell us if this is a timeframe that you're comfortable with, or if you'd like other stakeholders involved that aren't involved, or other things that we do for the broad public benefit to educate, because that's the whole purpose of this process, is to make sure there's a good amount of public education information shared with everybody about what residential sprinklers would mean for new construction. And Rocky and Andy, please give an overview if you'd like.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, as you can see, as part of that memo, it's a purpose, gives you some limited background about the International Residential Code and that whole process through the ICC. And, you know, we're here to help inform you that you can make an informed decision as our leaders in this community, as how we move forward with this whole process. I think Andy and I both, and I can speak for him, we were both comfortable with adopting it with the other parts of the codes. Codes change over the years. I can remember back years ago when we changed smoke detectors from battery-operated to hardwired and how the various stakeholders came out and said we were running up the expenses on residential home properties and buildings at that particular time, and yet that implementation went through and we're glad that it did. And this is another component of our building construction process in our community, our risk analysis for our citizens, and our life-saving initiatives. So Andy, would you like to say anything?
I think you said it very well, and really, at this point, I think we're looking for a calendar for June, and it's going to fill up quickly with lots of meetings that we have, and then we just really need a timeframe if we want to have a special, not so much a work session, but a workshop, where we might actually consider looking at an installation of fire sprinklers somewhere in Franklin, or maybe, I don't know if we have the option of taking a field trip potentially to go...
We got Rocky's house.
We could do that.
He's got them. That's about as far as a field trip we can afford, so I think that'd be perfect.
I want to see one while it's being built.
We can do that as well.
I want to see it while it's being built.
Do they all have a tractor?
You got, you got little pipes in the ceiling.
What?
See those legs up there?
That's right. You don't want to see that. The thing I want you to address, and we've talked about this before, is the heating and the air conditioning man, that came to my house and told me, if you ever have an opportunity to vote on sprinkler systems for homes, don't do it. Because he services all these homes in Nolanville that have had their pipes frozen and the sprinklers have gone off and then they've ruined floors, blah, blah, blah. But we talked about that, Rocky and Andy, and I think you said that there were some... Well, anyway, I won't say what you said, but, because I'll miss something, we talked about that, and obviously, we would have to make sure everything is in order with the way these homes are built, so those things don't happen.
Can I do a timeout? That's not the discussion tonight. The discussion tonight is to do a timetable. And so we're going to have a public meeting in July, and, I mean, a special workshop kind of thing. Workshop in July of this group.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And so we'll schedule that. And so we'll schedule that, and I don't want to cut you off, but.
No, that's fine. I totally agree.
That's the time for that discussion.
But the reason I brought that up is, can you make sure that that's in there? Because we had talked about that. I think that's really important, that we're presented with that information, because those.
And I think it's important also that we, we'll be happy to meet with y'all individually.
Andy will spend hours with you talking.
I know, I know.
The mayor gave us a couple of hours at this time, which we're very appreciative of that.
It's very entertaining.
Do you have to answer that?
A couple hours of his and an extra hour or two of Andy's while we're at it. So we'll schedule something in July, and you'll.
Let me, let me just say, I want to commend both Rocky and Andy for the time and effort that they put forward for this. Because I see this issue as an education issue. Now once we know all the details of this, and we can make an informed decision, and not just anecdotal things that we hear one way or the other.
And they're very passionate about it.
Yes.
And, and very biased about it.
They say why.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Before you leave, I just want to say.
Do you all agree with me?
You answered my questions, by the way.
Thanks for getting the vote right away.
Yes.
Appreciate it. That was good.
You bring a list of answers to the board, though, because they're going to ask.
Item number 14, discussion regarding the funding of small CIP projects.
And I put this out to you just to start a discussion, see how you wanted to move forward. I know that the actual prioritization itself is on your voting meeting tonight, but I wanted to put forth an idea at least of how we could get started on the top three projects that are identified on that prioritization list within your small projects. And those three are the Eastern Flank Battlefield Roadway or Access Roadway, the Mallory Station General George Patton Signalization, and the Nickel Mill Lane Project.
Yes, yes.
And so those three, and we were able to identify three distinct funding sources for those that we think can get those projects going. We'd like to start on those. The Battlefield Roadway, obviously, is one that is in, in process in terms of identifying those options, getting recommendations from the task force, looking at opportunities to leverage our dollars with donations, both direct and in-kind. And so that is admittedly a moving target in terms of how that might fit together, but is one that, that I think we can target, though, hotel motel tax as a funding source because of the direct tourist-related benefit, and that that would be an appropriate place to, to target whatever that city contribution ultimately ends up being. So that gives you a, I think, a good dedicated source for that portion. The Mallory Station, General George Patton Signalization is your number two ranked priority. There is a $140,000 developer contribution that we currently have in hand, ready to go for this project, and would leave us with $370,000 out of your current year funding. When you look at the $500,000 a year, that was in this year, the first $500,000 was in this year, that we have a little over a month remaining in. So you've got that portion, and then $500,000, if you look at it, that would be available to you in the next budget year, if we look at how we allocated that strictly, if you look at it strictly by year. So we would use $370,000 towards that purpose, and that would leave you $130,000 out of this year's allocation, you know, based on budget numbers here, that you could then just leave as unprogrammed and add to your $500,000 for next year, or just leave as a reserve, or just not spend. And it just goes to the, you know, a savings overall in what we had originally anticipated in the, the funding plan. And then the third item is one we had brought up previously, which is really just a reallocation of, of savings that we experienced in the Royal Oaks 96 Intersection Improvement Project of approximately $900,000 that would, could go towards the completion of the Nickel Mill Project, which again is a commitment the city made previously in terms of completing that project and gaining access to that area. You know, there is a repair necessary to that culvert regardless of what you do. We've got to do some things to improve that area. And we had made certain assumptions in the resurfacing plan as well that we will need to address if we don't move that project forward. So there are some costs that would be associated with that project either way. So I wanted to put this out there, and we wanted to put that, this out there to, to see if there's enough interest that we can at least move these three projects into the next stage, and off of just a list on a paper, but something we can start implementing and, and bring specific decisions forward to you to, to start doing these three projects.
No.
And you may not be comfortable with that yet at this point, but I wanted to at least get it out for you to start thinking about, and we can bring it back next meeting or down the line here. But we've got dollars that were assumed in that plan, and we've got projects that you'd like to see move forward, and we'd like to get working on them. We've been prioritizing the better part of this year, and we want to move these forward.
I want to say something, though, that's coming up in the budget. If you notice, the amount of money in the general fund that is required from the property tax to pay for debt service, and this stuff would be in debt service, no doubt about it, it is 70% more than the amount of money required last year. At least 70% more. It's 70% more of the property tax since. And I know our, our property value has gone up, so it's gone up more than 70% in one year. And so when we start talking about things that are committing capital dollars, I think we need to look at that very carefully. And, you know, from the $900,000 that was saved, which is absolutely wonderful, there may be some other places that that would need to go, because I was looking on the Hillsborough Road, isn't it saying $20 million? You know? So I like the idea of bringing this up and talking about what we can do, but I'd like to, to give some more thought. And really, you know, I thought we were saying we wouldn't do capital improvements until after the budget, but I'm just saying, it, it is, you know, whatever, anything that we do, anything that we do on capital improvements is going to affect not this next year, but if you look, we're not even paying principal and interest on some of the bonds that, that we have already offered from, from, you know, from, what, the current fiscal year right here. We're just paying some interest on it. So, you know, whenever we're talking about capital or anything, I think we need to look at it in the big picture.
Michael, yeah, I would clarify that we won't have hotel and motel tax funds available. Isn't that all committed through removing the debt on the convention center?
You've got a fund balance in that.
That's right.
Of about $1,009,000 right now. But you do have existing obligations in terms of debt service. We commit a 1% to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and, you know, so we've got some commitments in there. But you've got the ability to, to work with that project. And the convention center itself, or convention facility itself, does come off in 2013. So we can work to structure towards that as well as the existing fund balance. There are ways to work with that.
But what I'm hearing, that we really couldn't commit on that until 2013 to.
No, you can commit now.
There's some money in there.
There's a million dollars in reserves.
Based on, based on your reserve, and based on a long-term view of where that, where that fund is, with those obligations dropping off. But you could commit now to that project.
One thing, there has been interest in, in donors and other of the historic agencies here in participating in some form of this. But I, I think we need to give them some kind of target of saying, the city would allocate this much, and if, if they could, because just saying, well, there's, there's no amount given here. I think it's going to be difficult for us to sell this to.
Until we know which option we want to pursue. I mean, there's got to be work done on which option we're pursuing.
That's the other piece.
I think we need to wait until that process is completed.
Well, that's why I would say, let's put that into the category of hotel motel and manage that from a option selection, and then from that standpoint, A, how does the cost get shared if there are other people that want to participate in getting that done? Then we can do that. But, but it gives you a chance to say, we don't have to fund this with our annual allocation for small projects. We can look at hotel motel as a dedicated source for this, and, and start working through the process of identifying what option is the best option, and then how that cost gets shared.
But again, this was voted as the number one priority, and I see the wisdom of using the hotel motel tax. But that should give this some weight as far as what we're looking at in the future, too. And this way, without us committing some sort of amount, it kind of looks like it's been passed out.
Well, you know, as soon as a decision is made about what option you want to do, then we can start allocating a dollar amount towards that, or we can say, $260,000 was the lowest cost option. We're at least willing to put that much in. I, you know, there's a, there are a lot of ways to look at how you do it.
When will that option be decided?
Well, we're going to bring this back. It's going to be decided by us. We're going to bring this back next work session.
And you had, you had asked for the Battlefield Task Force, soon-to-be commission, to weigh in on that and provide input. We've also had a neighborhood meeting with that same group just last week to try to include their input. So, you know, that is moving along to, to help get you a recommendation. I'm not sure when the commission will, will provide something. Do you know, Mike?
It should be Thursday, second Thursday of next month.
Okay, so.
And, and again, we're not exactly legal yet, so.
Well, I don't think that's really relevant, because they don't vote anyway.
It's a recommendation anyway.
It's a recommendation.
You're ultimately the decision maker.
You do what you want to do, because it doesn't matter. It's decided by BOM. So you can make a recommendation if you want to, Clark.
Do you expect a decline in hotel motel tax based upon what's happened in Nashville and the convention center and Opera Lane and all of that?
Actually, the first quarter of this year has been about a 6% to 7% increase from the, the STAR reporting, the Smith Research reporting. So we expect to see some growth in that, and that was, that was pre-flood. So we think there will be actually some growth after a slight decline in the last calendar year.
And since Opera Lane's closed, we're bound to get some of that. But, but you know, they pulled in a lot of things that had extra people that didn't stay up there.
That was my thing.
Oh, that, okay. Is that what you were thinking?
That we had to spill over.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get it both sides of that.
Yeah, yeah, both ways.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for more discussion at the next work session. Item number 15, consideration of agreement for special detailed police officer services.
Pull it.
Pull it. Item number 16, consideration of resolution 2010-35 authorizing adoption of the Manual for the Septic Certification Inspection Program.
I noticed it said you have to, you have to pump your, your.
Apparently, for the final, for every three years, you have to do that.
Well, I mean.
Normally, you have to do that anyway.
Well, you don't.
Well, that's what, I'm just relaying what somebody told.
They might be saying it, but I don't.
Let us, let us talk through the program with you.
All right.
Sure. Very briefly, this program is authorized by the ordinance passed last year, 2009. The ordinance passed last year, 2009-31, which calls for an inspection program every three years for people who have septic systems where sewer is readily available. Basically, there will be two parts to this inspection. It will consist of a Department of Building and Neighborhood Services inspector going out and looking for sewage surfacing on the ground, which is the basic definition of malfunctioning for a septic system. If they find that sewage surfacing, then we will notify the county. The county will confirm that it is indeed sewage surfacing, and that it is actually a malfunction, and they will issue a notice of violation in response. So basically, all we're doing is kind of bird dogging for the county, for them to, to note that there's a violation. If we do not find sewage surfacing, then we would have the homeowner pump out the, the septic tank. There would be a, the septic pumper would then look around the interior of the vault to make sure that there aren't any, you know, major damage that would allow leakage or allow sewage to be transmitted into the soil surrounding the tank. If they pass these items, then their tank would be certified for an additional three years. They can continue to use their septic system. Propose the cost, we would charge a fee of $75 for this, for the inspector to go look at it. The cost of pumping would be somewhere between $200 and $300, depending on what the, the private company charges for that service. It's very, you know, just a very simple process. If you have any questions, I would certainly be glad to answer them.
Now, you're telling me that pumping is not going to be required unless they see evidence.
Pumping.
That would happen. In other words, every time you inspect this, it's not going to be pumped?
Yes, that is the second part. If you successfully pass, if you have no sewage surfacing, and, and the, since the system seems to be okay, then the second part is to have the tank pumped.
And you're required to have that done each time every three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Ooh. Not liking that. Too expensive.
The EPA and, and other agencies recommend that the pumping frequency be somewhere in the neighborhood of three years.
Now, why, if they weren't being expected, they wouldn't have, they need to have it pumped. I mean, people don't have to have their septics pumped every two to three years.
What we're doing here, though, is.
But, but, we're requiring, we're preventing. But the thing is, if you're going out to inspect these pumps, or the, the septic tanks, and it's $75, go out there and do that, the fee, then we're also requiring them to pay $200 or $300 every three years to do this. And it has to be done. You can't just get, you can't just look at the surface. You can't tell, you're telling me, without having it pumped.
Well, that gives us a shot at looking at the interior of the septic tank. The, those are the two inspection points that we can get a hold of. Do we see septic surfacing, or do we, you know, can we detect damage to the tank?
And this is for just those properties that have access to city sewer that are choosing not to, to make that tie-in at this point?
Yep.
This isn't just for every septic system. This is just for those folks that you've granted that, essentially, that grace period of saying, you don't have to tie on as long as you can prove your system works. And so this is the surest way for us to ensure that it works. And yes, there is some cost associated with it, but it helps avoid thousands of dollars of tie-in costs that, you know, that you've given them time to defer.
And part of this is, you are looking at the, this is based on standard of practice. This is from the Manual of Septic Tank Inspection, correct?
Is there a standard?
This is protocol.
They just dipstick that.
This is protocol, right? I mean.
Yes. We would use this manual to conduct the inspections.
This manual?
Yes.
But the three years, we came up with the three years.
No, that's what I'm trying to get. Is this a.
Yes.
We, we could pick five, we could pick eight, we could pick three, we pick three.
Could we? Or is there a standard of practice?
Our ordinances that we developed last.
This is based on the ordinance.
Okay.
Completely based on what the ordinance says.
Okay. I'm trying to get best practice versus what we came up with.
Well.
You didn't dictate specifically pumping. You dictate that, that an inspection will be conducted.
Okay.
Yeah, but now we get the pumping with it.
Which facilitates a thorough inspection.
Yeah, I understand that, but I understand that, but it's like, maybe we need to move it to five years.
Michael.
We can also stop giving it. You can't do thorough inspection if you can't see the tank, you know? It could be cracked, it could be leaked, there could be damage that you would never know about because it's not going to show up on the surface. So if we're going to do a legitimate program, then we need to not just give it lip service, but to actually do what we're saying we're going to do.
I'm not going to give it lip service, that's for sure.
Way to go, Clyde.
How many properties?
There will be 224 properties currently. We still have three special assessment districts that are in their final stages. And when they finally complete, then we'll have 224 properties eligible.
But some of those will quickly tie on.
Yeah, some will tie on by the way.
So it'll be no more than 224.
Correct.
Will, will we have to add personnel to do this?
Uh, no, there will be no extra personnel.
Okay, let's move on to item number 17. I think this, what, what you have before you on this handwritten sheet is the information that was presented to, based upon the motion made by the Finance Committee to. to, based upon the motion made by the Finance Committee to reduce every agency by 6% across the line and not, and not use the number presented by the United Way. We're going to have to have that as part of a voting resolution in order to do that, so we're passing that forward. I, my thought about any further discussion about United Way, we might move to a later time if everybody's okay with that.
And I tried to piggyback on Mike's issue here, just to say that the full board was aware of what the recommendation out of budget and finance was, which is basically 6% across the board reduction for the nonprofits in this appropriation group, and so, just wanted to show that to everybody as we go through this. This would be a resolution we would go ahead and place on for vote next meeting. So, I'd sort of piggybacked on this subject so that this was just there, and we can move from there.
Why a resolution? I mean, you were sitting there, it was a committee meeting, there was a budget discussion. If the committee decided not to take your recommendation on the police car rentals, police program, for instance, you wouldn't have brought back a resolution for that.
Well, the board has directed us to allocate these dollars. The appropriation itself is just a total number. It's not a by organization, and so, what we're trying to do is just have the board...
It's got in here, doesn't it?
Tell us the specifics, but what you'll adopt as a budget won't have that detail in it, and so, we wanted to have this be a specific breakout of how those dollars go
I don't mind.
among those agents.
And we talked about it, I just felt like it was better, since, I felt like it was better that the board adopt that as it goes forward, because we're not using what was recommended by United Way, and that was what was presented, and since it wasn't presented in the budget process, and it's going to be different than the budget process, I felt like it ought to go...
Well, now, wait, I thought it was in the budget process.
No, the dollar amount was.
But I thought that we had in here the allocations that they asked.
The allocations is what the United Way asked for.
Right.
But these are different.
Right.
And we passed a motion...
I understand, but the Budget Committee doesn't have the authority to make that decision. It has to be Board of Mayor.
Oh, I understand that, but why would the Budget Committee's recommendation not be the one that comes with the budget? Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, well, I mean, the way it comes in the budget that you adopt is that total number. This provides an added level of detail about how that total number gets allocated among these various agencies, because we don't, you don't appropriate by organization when you do that budget.
No, but you do have a line item number on all these other things that we've got in here that I thought we were agreeing to.
You don't, I don't believe you adopt at that level of detail when you adopt your budget.
So, in other...
You don't adopt the 77 pages of budget detail that is behind that total, so that's why we did this as a clarification for the full board.
Well, last year, when you did that, we were already in the process of the budget, so I could understand a budget amendment last year going forward, but, oh, that's fine, it doesn't make any...
I just think that the staff has to have the authority from the board of how to distribute those dollars, and we haven't given them that direction.
As a Board of Mayor and Alderman, I agree.
Yes, and we haven't given them that direction for this year, and we have to do that every year, because we don't want to give that authority to staff. It has to be approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. I mean, I don't think there's any other way we can do that.
I do agree with that, but I was thinking that the, that the committee...
To me, it's six, one, half a dozen others.
Committee recommendation should have been...
Phase of the budget. Now, the other thing you could do is you could, tonight, if you wanted to, we're adopting the budget on phase...
First reading.
First reading, you could throw that in as an amendment, and just say, including, you know, this jar, and then that would satisfy that as well. I just, that is just not, because the board has to make that decision, we have to make that decision somehow, and whether it's a resolution or throwing it into the budget.
This may not be the right form, I just wanted you to directly tell us how you wanted to do that, because quite frankly, we messed that up last year.
Either way's fine, it doesn't matter. We can do a separate resolution, we can do it as amendment to the budget tonight and pass it on through, and I don't care.
Just real quick, I know we're...
We're out of town.
Can we put on the next work session discussion of the process?
No, that's what we're going to throw it on in the next work session. Yes, that's what we're going to do.
So, not tonight, all right?
No. All right, we're going to be adjourned for, hopefully, a very, very short period. I've got to take a break.